All right, we're going to reconvene the meeting, and next item we have on the agenda is Oral Communications, number one. And I have a few slips here. First one up is Tom Heinz.
Last week, Mr. Lentz, I was appalled when you said you didn't know if you had the authority to decide on eight Thomas. If that's the case, then resign. If you have no authority, then you shouldn't have voted. You should have recused yourself. You can't have it both ways. At each of these meetings, we heard a lot of talk about community values. And this community has defined some of its values and has elected you as its leaders to understand and uphold these laws. We place our trust in you to uphold those values. One of those values has been written up as the ridgeline ordinance. And I think part of the spirit of that ridgeline ordinance was to preserve our small-town character. I believe I've heard each of you utter those words, "small-town character." I think another part of the spirit of the ordinance, the reason for its inception, was to say, "Stop destroying our values." Now, at the very first opportunity available, you want to violate that trust with the public, your constituents, by skirting the law. There are no guarantees when purchasing land. Yes, you have a right to build, but not to build anything you want of any size you want. Joseph Campbell once said, "You can always tell who is in power in any civilization." They build the tallest, largest buildings. In Egyptian times, it was the pharaohs; in medieval times, it was the churches. Today, it's corporations, the banks, big money. Here in Brisbane, it's developers, not the people. Recall recently, a developer who wanted to build a gas station here. The righteous man withdrew his proposal after realizing it was against community values. Last week, you all appeared to act like ignorant schoolchildren. "Well, I don't know what to do about the Mass." It's simple, folks. And it used to be a requirement in the Sierra Point guidelines, and it's called articulation. And it's done by varying wall projections, fenestration, undulating roof lines, none of which I see in these plans. Mr. Lentz, I overheard you describing last week's meeting to someone, saying things like, "It's only from this view," and "only seen from this one spot." It's not about one person's views, nor from any particular spot. It's about the mountain for all of us and following our laws. This doesn't add up. Something's wrong with this picture. Someone is attracted to Brisbane because of its small-town character, then wants to build one of the largest homes on the peninsula. Pretty certain it's the largest home in Brisbane. And this is a compound, a walled compound. Many cultures build this way, nothing wrong with it. Buildings smack right up next to each other, even out to the sidewalks. But that's not our culture, and we've established specific laws for building here. Just follow our laws. This does not meet the requirements for a non-conforming lot in Brisbane Acres. The idea of the common good is disappearing. It's being privatized. I ask you, preserve the common good. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next speaker I have is Danny Ames.
Danny Ames, 30-year-plus residence. And I'd like to echo the same sentiment as Tom has. I feel there's Brisbane commons that we all share, and those have been spelled out. They've been expressed by everyone in town. Brisbane plans, policies, they've made that really clear. What are we doing? I feel due process had not occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Next slip I have is Beth Grossman.
Honorable council members, in the last city council hearing, the council was asked to make a decision in a straw vote before the issues presented by both the public and the council were considered. Due process was not upheld. I would like to ask the city council to discuss all the issues and ordinance applicable to this Brisbane Acres property with an open mind, regardless of what they said in the straw vote. As our elected officials, I feel you owe this to the Brisbane constituents. I am looking for democracy to work. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Next slip I have is Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, honorable mayor and council. I dedicate these comments to Emma Cunningham. The dirt pile, what the heck is going on with the damn dirt pile? It's getting bigger and wider and dustier. I know that BBAMQ has been out here. I had to call them this week. I sent them photographs of dust on the road. The dust mitigation measures are not working. The street sweeper, all he does is pulverize the dirt into a fine powder that, when combined with water and rain, turns into something that is slicker than snot and dangerous to drive on. And this situation has persisted, and I have been up here talking to you about it for the last three years. When are you going to put in a permit that we can uphold? I am absolutely appalled and disgusted by the dragging of feet, by the delays, by the inability to count to 25 feet in height from the surrounding areas as defined in the original permit. And I would really like us to do something about it. It's totally out of hand. It's blocking the view of the mountain from everywhere along Bay Shore, and it is a hazard to human health, and it's a hazard to life on the bay. Huge dust clouds. The other morning, I took a picture from the end of Sierra Point Road, and here's this pall of dust at quarter to eight in the morning already hanging over Sierra Point Baylands. Bayland soil processing and stockpiling. I think it really needs to be addressed. I'm kind of tired of standing up here and talking about it. The other issue that I'm really disgusted about is the litter and the trash. We've put these dumpsters out that have become an attractive nuisance, where people dump, 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 except when the sign is actually out there saying, "Do not dump." City staff goes, I've seen them many mornings, cleaning up the mess around the dumpsters from people who have dumped during the night. And yet Tunnel Road is allowed to continue to have garbage on it, some of which was, I've watched the garbage, actually, pieces of garbage I have watched, that have been there since the last game at Candlestick. And it's still there, and it still hasn't been picked up or cleaned. The bushes are now impeding the roadway, causing a hazard to navigation for cars and people and bicycles. It is a dangerous situation that persists. And even driving into our own town, as you come to the curve where the board is, right there in front of you is a bunch of garbage on the side of the road that has been there for weeks and weeks and weeks. But we don't have the staff to go pick up that little bit of garbage because they're busy picking up the garbage out there at those dumpsters. The situation is untenable. This is not part of our community-wide values. This is not part of how Brisbane should be presenting itself to the world as a garbage dump. No wonder San Francisco has no compunction about coming and dumping all that dirt out there and creating more nuisance for us, because we allow it. We just lay down and allow it. "Oh, San Francisco has this big project, and that's so important it perverts all of our laws and all of our rules." Well, what's the point of being a city, then? We should have just let San Francisco annex us back then, if we're going to just roll over and not take care of our town the way that we should. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Clay, sorry to put you on the spot here, bury a little bit, and can you give us an update on what the process is with the soils processing, what's going on? Just a quick update. I know you've done this at city managers' update during meetings, but if you could just give us a quick one.
Yeah, so we are anticipating that the memorandum of agreement will be on your next agenda. We are working on a topographical view of the site, and from that, we'll be able to actually identify elevations. And so the identification of the elevations is kind of the last piece of being able to put that together. That is the agreement that basically gets us to a, the next part of the process would be to go then to the planning commission on an interim use permit. But this gets us between now and whenever that interim use permit may be granted, which could be sometime into the future, depending on deliberations at the planning commission and ultimately at the city council.
And I know we've had some enforcement actions out there, too, so...
We've had several, and Public Works Director and I took a visit out there last week. I've been out there, I think, three times in the last, within the last week, including last night. And, you know, there are some issues. I would agree with the speaker on some, probably not on others, in terms of the, what's going on out there. But I think that we'll have a full discussion of that when we get back here in three weeks. And not only what the rules are, but also the practicality of enforcement and what we can reasonably expect to do. But I will say that we have a public works inspector who's out there on several times a week, and we are in coordination with Bay Area Air Quality Management District and have a good working relationship with them. So we're taking this very seriously, and I realize that, you know, that this is kind of a nuisance to a lot of people, and I agree with that. And we're doing our best to try to manage it.
Yeah. And I know we've been doing some stuff on the litter issue, and...
Well, we've, and that will be kind of front and central of the changes in our new franchise agreements. But yes, we've got a contract right now with South San Francisco Scavengers who periodically does sweeps up and down Bay Shore Boulevard. We do have the dumpsters, as is indicated. You know, I realize there's pros and cons to the dumpsters, but they do collect a lot of garbage out there, and that's garbage that would be going somewhere else. And I guess we'll have an opportunity to have a discussion about whether we want to continue that or try to do something different there. UPC is responsible for Tunnel Avenue, and we do have an enforcement with them that they're supposed to be out there on a weekly basis. And I would agree that sometimes they do a good job and sometimes they don't. And I've had that conversation several times with them. And as far as trash elsewhere in the city, you know, I mean, we're doing our best to try to stay on top of that in our new franchise agreements. We're going to have a lot more responsibility for that with the garbage haulers, and there will be a cost, obviously, that will come with that. But we're taking that very serious, and that's really part of our regional quality permit going into the future.
Okay. Thanks for that update. I don't have any more slips. Does anybody else wish to address the council? Barbara?
So, on eight Thomas, I just wanted to say, you know, I have not followed this issue as closely as some of the other citizens in Brisbane, and of course, the planning commission and the council, so I don't want to try and push my opinion on anybody. But we do have an appeals process, and being granted by the planning commission is not a guarantee, still not a guarantee. And as much as my heart goes out to these people who have invested this much in this property, if the council really feels that the planning commission overlooked something, then you guys need to exercise your right to act on that appeal. So I just feel like, you know, I felt last time from some of the comments that some people were not willing or feeling personally restrained, circumstantially restrained, from making a decision. But you guys are our council, and like my fellow citizens said, of course, Barbara Ebel, 12-year resident, said, "We look to you for leadership." So if you guys need to make a decision, please make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else?
Dan Carter, 340 Mendocino Street. It's funny, because you guys have taken in information for a long period of time, including two very long meetings for the last couple of weeks. And it seems like people, because they saw things waning or leaning a certain way, that all of a sudden, you guys haven't thought about this, you haven't done your homework, and all of a sudden, it's a bad decision because it hasn't leaned their direction. I myself find that insulting to you guys. I know that you guys are all people that work hard at what you do, and you take this very seriously. And for anybody else to make those statements, they can have their opinions like we all do, but I appreciate what you guys do, and I appreciate the time and the effort and the distance you guys go to find out the facts on things and make what you think is a fair decision based on all the facts that you put together. And everything won't always go anybody's certain opinions away, and that's how our town works. We have a lot of opinions, and that's a great thing. And the process is a wonderful thing. So thank you, guys, for what you're doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else wish to address the council? I thought you had your hand up there for a second, Sherri, I go, "No, you're, you can't do that." Sorry, you're exempt from this. All right. So let's move on from Oral Communications to Consent Calendar. So we have five items on there. Council's pleasure on this.
I'd like to remove item A from the consent calendar. I have a couple, I have one minor change on the minutes.
Want to move item A? Okay. Anybody else? Can I get a motion for items B through E?
I'll make a motion to approve items B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And that was Monthly Investment Report, Resolution 2014-05, which is close the commercial property loophole on Proposition 13. And item D was Adopt Resolution 2014-2 for MOU for dirtier leases. This has to do with the Animal Care Center, the SPCA, and also the cosponsorship for Brisbane Dance Workshop, annual spring performance in May 17th and 18th. Kate Laurie, item A.
Okay, so on the minutes of February 3rd, 2014, on page four, under Mayor Council Matters, Part A, Countywide Assignments Subcommittee Reports, it states in the last sentence that I was interviewed on San Mateo County today, it should be special edition. Went back and reviewed the video, and that's what I said. That's the, another county Penn TV show called Special Edition with Mark Simon. San Mateo County Today was the previous one that I interviewed on as an individual person, but this was the panel discussion on Special Edition. With that change, I would move to approve these minutes.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Made it through that. I'll put them up as a public hearing. This is item A, which is Consider Adoption of Resolution Number 2014-03, Amending the Master Fee Schedule Regarding the Swimming Pool Fees and Monthly Passes and Punch Passes. Staff report, please.
Yes, this is an issue that the Parks and Recreation Commission has worked through for their two previous meetings. What has happened over the years, when we do increases at the pool on our annual fee schedule, we increase our fees based on inflation. So what has happened is that we end up increasing our punch pass and our monthly pass fees without increasing our daily pass, because when we're doing a 1% or 2% increase on a $5 fee or a $3 fee, it doesn't raise it up to another dollar. So what has happened over the, you know, the last 10 years, as we've gone through this, is that the number of punch passes you get for a set daily fee or the number of monthly times you get to go for a monthly pass has become very disparate between all the user classes. So what the Parks and Recreation Commission did is asked us to look at what would be, how would we make all those different discounts normal or the same throughout the classes? So if you look at Attachment A, you will see that what we're looking at is having the 15 punch pass be a 20% discount, and that the monthly pass would be equivalent to 12 visits during the month. The difference between a punch pass and a monthly pass is the 15 punch pass is good for one year, whereas the monthly pass is only good for the month that it is issued. So that's the reason why the monthly, the punch passes are more expensive than the monthly passes, because you can use them for more than just one single month. The idea of it was not to really look at increasing any revenues, it was just to try and make everybody, make all the discounts similar between the classes. If you notice that, you know, the non-resident adults is still more expensive than the residents, and this does not change the other issue that we talked about last year, where on the weekends, for the non-residents, their rates go up. It's, I know it's $10 for an adult, for non-residents on the weekend during the summer, to try and create some kind of differential in the supply and demand between residents and non-residents using the pool during the summer months. If there's any questions, more than happy to answer them, but this is the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to the city council as to how to change our pool fees to more rationalize them.
Okay. Council have any clarifications or questions before we open the public hearing?
I do not.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and it's now open. Anybody wish to speak on this matter?
Annie Miller, I guess I'm a pool user, that should be heard. I feel that the monthly passes are very cheap because people who swim every day, it's not going to cost them very much. It's really, really subsidizing frequent swimmers. So I would be happier if everybody just had the 15 swim pass and then pay for the same fee for every swim, instead of the monthly swimmers getting such a break. The other thing I wish, of course, doesn't have to do with the rates, would be a whole look at the... look at the scheduling, why springs are so late and summers start so later. The seasonal break doesn't fit right. The fall is the best time, really, best weather. And just because school is in session, then we go into a very much narrower schedule. So I wish that the commission would look at that, and maybe you can direct them. But that's my input, is to get rid of the monthly passes.
Thank you, Anya. Michelle?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident and regular pool user also, and I concur with Anya's suggestion. I think that the monthly pass is too good of a deal. And I also think that the scheduling is weird between summer and winter. And so I agree. And I also appreciate the work that Stuart has done on this. I know he's thought long and hard about it. And I love the pool as a community resource, and I think we should do everything we can to support it being open. And I know that we subsidize the cost, but it was part of the great compromise. And so I use the pool for my health and well-being. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Anybody else? Karen?
Karen Cunningham, I am also a regular pool user. I would just jack up the rates on the monthly pass, because I don't think the regular swimmers are going to go. And we do get a really good deal. And I think it's way too cheap. So I would jack up the rates on the monthly. The punch pass, not so much of a great idea from my perspective. I think it's great for people who swim casually, but people who come every day, having that monthly pass is great. And if you ask me to pay an extra $15 a month for that, I sure would, or even 20.
Thank you, Karen. Joel?
Joel Diaz, thank you for letting me speak. I agree with the previous speakers that I think it is too good of a deal in some cases. And I'm just, I don't have all the answers, but I think it would be beneficial maybe to look at it in the future going forward, doing more of a cost benefit analysis and looking at, you know, how the costs far outweigh the benefits in terms of the overall quality experience of using our pool, especially in the summertime, because it gets really, really crowded. And we invite a lot of people in because the prices are so attractive, and the pool is really nice, as you know. And so it kind of diminishes the whole experience for us residents who want to use it during those optimal times. And it is quite a burden for the city to bear to maintain that pool. And it seems kind of ironic that others get to benefit from these really attractive, cheap prices. So I think that I agree with everybody else, and I would ask you to look into that if possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Going once?
Move to close the public hearing?
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Council discussion. It's your pleasure. Who wants to start? Ray! Oh, my God. Go ahead.
It just becomes really more of a question to the person who has been acting as a better recreation, have been to all the commission meetings and so forth. The kinds of things that were brought out by the members of the public right now, were these discussed by the commission? And if so, what did they have to say about them?
There hasn't been much of a discussion over how many visits should be for the discount. The challenge is what would be considered a regular monthly user. There are, and I fully admit to it, I am one of the, probably the most regular pool users in the city. I go six days a week, seven to eight times a week. So yes, I mean, there is a benefit for me on the monthly pass. But the average, probably the average person using a monthly pass probably visits about 20 times a month. You know, they don't swim every day. There's, some of them don't swim on the weekends because they work in town. Some of them swim every other day. So there wasn't much conversation on that, but I think, you know, if you would like to have the Parks and Recreation Commission look at that issue, I think that would be a legitimate issue. You may, maybe you raise it to saying that you get the discount after your 16th visit or 17th visit. I mean, it becomes a matter of dollars. It's not going to be something that we're going to balance the budget on, on this issue. It's just a matter of how much do we want the pool used? The issue about the hours, I can bring that up with their, with their programs committee to see. And, you know, one of the speakers was correct. We try and mirror when we keep the pool open to school years for two reasons. One, you know, obviously during the day, our heavy users are schools, are students. So, you know, we have the pool open in the summer for the children. The other issue is getting our lifeguards. A large number of our lifeguards are high school students. So if we were to try and keep the pool open for extended hours during the day, it may become more difficult for us to, you know, during the school year, it may become more difficult for us to get lifeguards. They're either, you know, they're either in school for high school, or some of them are still in school for college. So that would be part of the challenge that we would have if you want us to keep the pool open longer. And as it relates to people who use the pool on the weekends, which is when it is most crowded, we do have a differential for out-of-town, for non-residents. But remember that we also consider people who work in town to be residents. So if you work in any of the businesses in Brisbane, you know, you may not be recognizable as a Brisbane resident, but we still have residential rates for employees of businesses in Brisbane. So I mean, those are, I think, kind of summarize, gets to, I think, the questions that the public has asked and how we might want to deal with them.
Lori?
I have another question for staff. Have we looked at how the monthly pass discounts and the rates in general compare to other local city pools?
Yes.
It sounds like what people are saying is it's too steep of a discount for the monthly pass. And I'm assuming if you, I think the staff report said that you evened out this discount, so it was a 20% discount.
Right.
For the monthly and for the punch pass. Have we considered lowering that percentage?
Steve did do the analysis. This is not out of line with other local pools. I just don't have that information on the top of my head. I'd have to ask Steve to produce that. But we did look at that.
Did we, when we were looking at the fees, did we look at a summer weekend price, when, a premium weekend price for when the pool is at, would be at its most utilized with more people than it can be?
We do have that. We have a weekend price for non-residents. And I know it's $10 for adults, and I think it is, I think it might be $7 or $8 for children. Since that is not being changed at this time, that's not included in here. But we, you already approved that at a previous meeting.
So there is a premium weekend, summer time?
For non-residents.
For non-residents. And does that, when?
Bless you.
If I were to come with a pool party of six or 10 kids, does that mean everyone in my party gets the non or the residence rate?
My guess is yes. Because trying to ask every person who walks through, every child walking through the door where they live becomes a very arduous task as you're dealing with long lines. So if you are a resident and you say, "These are my children," we're not going to challenge you as to whether or not they are residents or non-residents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Clip?
No, I don't. I, you know, I was fine with the recommendations from the Park and Rec Commission. I'll be quite honest, I was surprised that people come and say, "The prices are too low. You need to raise them."
Well, I mean, I think it's...
It wasn't just one person. It was, you know, five people.
No, I mean, I think it speaks a lot to the pool itself. I think a lot of people are very happy with the pool. I think they are, you know, for the most part, impressed with the level of service, with the quality of the pool. And they recognize that, you know, this is a public service that we probably, you know, as with a lot of our public services, we subsidize. And the question is, you know, I think for a lot of people, how much do we subsidize it? And, you know, how busy does it become when you subsidize it?
Sure. Yeah, you know, you're always trying to, trying to find that sweet spot.
Right.
And as you will demonstrate later in the agenda in regards to the budget in the Mission Blue Center, you know, we felt, hey, we're not charging enough at Mission Blue. We need to raise the rates. And now we're showing, taking in less money than we did the previous year, about $33,000. So, you know, sometimes, you know, you got to be careful. You don't want to be, I guess, the bottom of the barrel, but you don't, you don't want to price yourself out of, you know, what the market will bear. So I, I don't know, I'm fine with what they recommended and see how it goes. And if we still feel that it's too cheap, then, you know, then have the Park and Rec Commission deal with it again. Or we could just send it back to them and see if they could come up with a higher rate. I'm fine with the way that it is.
Well, we know we'll never balance the budget with the rates.
No, I think we have about 20 monthly users.
Yeah.
So that's not going to be, that's not going to make the pool break even one way or the other.
Well, it's the council's pleasure on this. You want to send it back, or do you want to move it forward, take a look at it again on an annual basis?
I would like to move it forward because I think it's, while it's a small change at this point, we can see how it implements and whether it affects usage at the pool. And if we were to send it back to a committee or for revisions, we certainly wouldn't see it for at least the start of the, probably the summer season. And at that point, it's hard to implement when families are making plans on how they're going to utilize their resources for their recreation budget. So I would recommend adopting this and bringing it back to look at again if we feel it's not an effective change.
What we can do is just bring it to the commission maybe in October, where it's had a little bit of time to work and see how the numbers are, and see if they have any suggestions in October. And then implement that for the next summer season.
Sounded like a thorough motion.
I'll second that if that's what it was.
Yeah, I'm prepared to go along with the resolution at this point. But I do think that some of the issues that have been raised are worthy of commission attention and some evaluation and reporting back to us in a reasonable period of time. I think we're always looking at the rates and how fairly they are imposed and how they are implemented. And I think also the schedule is worthy of consideration to see whether there are ways to make it more appropriate to our actual weather rather than, you know, the way which high school was set up. I know that's an employee problem, but it seems kind of interesting that, you know, these high school schedules, even college schedules, were set up in the 19th century on a rural agricultural schedule, and we still follow it. And yet, it doesn't fit the weather here, nor does it fit the kind of society we are anymore. So it's kind of a crazy bind we find ourselves in. So if there was some way to figure out how we can bring us into the 21st century, it would be useful.
Okay. I'll bring that back to the commission.
Okay. If, I don't know, I guess you've already made the motion?
Motion and second on the floor.
Okay. And that's my opinion, and I hope that the further requests would also be passed on to the commission.
And I agree. I'm comfortable with moving it forward now and with the commission looking at it in October. I did have one further question, though. The staff report says that it would not, this proposal would not impact non-resident rates for the summer months?
Right. That meant the higher rate for non-residents during the weekend, where they pay $10 for adults and either $7 or $8 for children.
Okay.
So it doesn't change that, which the city council looked at.
Okay.
Prior to last summer.
Okay.
So I didn't want anybody to think we were getting rid of those, that differential.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto old business. Item A, which is consider appeal with Planning Commission's approval of eight Thomas design permit DP 1-13 and grading permit EX 1-13.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. At the close of the public hearing at the last meeting on this item, the council requested the applicant to pursue additional design alterations to address some of the concerns that came up in the various public hearings. And in response, the applicant has proposed to modify the proposal by lowering the pad elevation of the main residence by a foot and a half, thereby lowering the top of the roof line elevation from 189 feet, mean sea level, to 187.5 feet, mean sea level. So the reduction in the roof elevation by 1.5 feet. Additionally, the garage height would be lowered by 1.5 feet to ensure that the garage did not encroach above the, or extend above the top of the main dwelling. There was originally a step in the pad where the garage was at a lower pad elevation. The home was slightly higher by lowering the home, but the walls of the garage were higher to maintain a constant ridge line height. So by dropping the height of the pad for the main house to keep the roof line constant, that means the wall heights of the garage need to be dropped by a foot and a half. So overall, the entire elevation will be dropped a foot and a half from what was originally presented. And then there was some discussion about the landscaping plan, and some additional language was added to condition of approval nine to better reflect the intent of making sure there's a balance between screening and softening the appearance of the house versus protecting ridge line views with the landscaping that is installed in the site. So that's reflected in condition 9D. With that, staffs recommending approval of the project, denial of the appeal by approval of resolution 2014-8 as modified. That concludes staff's comments.
Okay. Council, questions? City attorney?
Mayor and council, one point of order before proceeding to the discussion. As I mentioned at the last hearing, you're in the midst of what's called a quasi-judicial hearing, which is where the council is sitting as the decision makers applying the laws of the city to a certain set of facts. One of the requirements of a quasi-judicial hearing is that if there have been any contacts that the council has had outside of the hearing process, then at the start of the hearing, continuing, it's important to disclose those contacts and the nature briefly of what those contacts were so that everybody is aware of any contacts that were had outside of the hearing. So my suggestion would be that before opening up the hearing to the council, that there be an opportunity for the council members to disclose if there have been any ex parte contacts and what the nature of those contacts have been.
Okay. Anybody wish to disclose anything of any contacts that you've had the last, I guess, week?
Yeah, I'd like to. So after our last council meeting, when I was at my car, I was approached by a few residents. They all wanted to chat about eight Thomas. And, you know, being that receptive council member, I did speak with them. I believe I reiterated what I had said on the dais. I also mentioned about my experience on the Planning Commission. Um, uh, I also mentioned about my experience, uh, on the planning commission when this was before us, uh, back in oh-six. Um, I then had responded, uh, to a couple of emails that came after our, um, council meeting. Um, a couple of people had, uh, sent some very passionate emails and I said, "Thank you for coming" and that if, um, you know, if you wanted to, um, talk about what I had said on, on the dais, that, um, you could call me. And, and they did. And, um, you know, we, you know, I basically said what, uh, I had said on, on the dais. Um, I had also mentioned to them that the applicant was, uh, gonna be bringing forth, um, some changes to his, uh, application. So, um, you know, I, hindsight, yeah, I probably should not have done that. Um, I did it because, you know, I, I, I felt that, you know, these people had, you know, wanted to kinda let off some steam and, and, and I felt I could be beneficial in, in not only just reiterating what I had said, but perhaps getting some information from them that could help, um, me with my, my decision-making. Um, and so, um, yeah, so I just wanted just to put that out there that, um, you know, that, that that had occurred.
Okay, anybody else?
I received one email thanking me for my comments and I did not respond.
Okay, you don't have to respond to that.
I received a few emails as well, just thanking me for my comments and I did not respond. And I received one email requesting a meeting and I advised that person that I was not able to meet, uh, based on the advice of the city attorney.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I, I just wanna say that, uh, you know, I did receive a, a phone call from a member of the public, uh, the afternoon of, uh, our meeting last week and, but we didn't talk, you know, I, I didn't talk about the project because I had not given any opinion about the project. Um, after, you know, but since I had given an opinion at the meeting, I felt that it was okay to be able to reinstate that. And so, um, I didn't feel that I had broken the rules, but, um, you know, better to be safe than sorry and, and, and wait until a final decision has been made. So I, I apologize for, for doing that.
Okay. Ray, I assume you don't have anything?
Uh, well, just one thing I wanted, uh, well, first I should say that I followed the city attorney's advice, that it was inappropriate to have a conversation and so I tried to follow the city attorney's advice. Um, but then I've also, um, done some of my own homework and, uh, prepared, uh, some alternate language and I don't know when would be the appropriate time to distribute that, so that's my question to the city attorney.
Councilmember Miller, I believe that the, the language was on the, on the dais, uh, so all the council members.
I don't think it's been distributed.
Oh, I'm, I see, you, you haven't distributed it to the other council members. Now would be an appropriate time, uh, at the commencement of the council's discussion.
Okay, so I can just give them out now?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Pass it down.
Okay.
Oh, good, it's a redline version.
We try. Okay, so the public is aware, if ones that, on the proposed language from Ray is on the fourth whereas, on the first sentence is saying whereas a mitigated negative declaration was approved, and he's adding for a similar project on this site, and he's striking the project. And on the fifth whereas, saying whereas after public hearings on October tenth, two thousand thirteen and November fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, the planning commission strike and, and approve the application of, he's adding of, man quash and striking the S, the applications. And I do wanna note that, uh, man is spelled M-A-N-H. Now, look at the applicant, because we wanna make sure his spelling is correct. And then on the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh whereas, Ray is suggesting whereas on March third, two thousand fourteen and March tenth, two thousand fourteen, the city council conducted hearings instead of, he said, wants to strike of and add on the application. Then on the eighth whereas, whereas the city council, Ray wants to insert after having, and then it goes on to say reviewed, considered, and considered the staff reports relating to said application, the plans and photographs, the written and oral evidence presented in support of and in opposition to the application. Then he wants to strike public hearing of the city of Brisbane and then continue to make hereby makes the findings attached herein. And then on the last paragraph that starts with city engineer, is suggesting strike by the city council. So it would read, city engineer issuance of grading permit EX one dash thirteen is recommended to allow the house to be lowered into the hillside in compliance with the conditions of approval attached here and as exhibit A. And, uh, David, do you have a copy of this?
I do and I have reviewed it.
And you're good with the changes?
Yes, I think the changes are of course up to the, the council, uh, but there's no legal reason why the changes could not be made. They all comply with the, the evidence and the testimony, uh, and would be appropriate if the council wishes to make them.
Okay, and then there's also additional changes and, uh, council have any issues with suggestion language?
I'm still reading it, so.
Oh. Okay, on exhibit A, um.
Oh, I thought you meant on the entire thing.
Um, just on the resolution part. Uh, just speaking of the resolution.
I, I don't have any problems with the resolution as amended.
The proposed, proposed language changes? Okay. On exhibit A, under findings, under item A, Ray is suggesting adding between the and buildings, saying the ridge line buildings placement, height, bulk and landscaping will insert largely and then continue with preserve those public views and then insert of community-wide value and continue of the San Bruno Mountain State and County Park as seen from the community park and from the Bay Trail along the Brisbane Lagoon and Sierra Point guidelines. Then he's suggesting shorelines. And then he's suggesting that we strike that are found to be of community-wide value.
Just changes the location in the sentence.
Can I?
Changes the location.
What do you mean by the ridge line buildings placement? Why did you insert ridge line there?
Uh, the reason for that is that this comes from the ridge line ordinance and it only, this particular language only refers to ridge line parcels. So we should be clear about that? That's the reason why.
Okay. It just seems like an odd phrase, ridge line building. Um, but I see what you're saying now that you've explained it. And then largely preserve? Um, it, it seems to me that this, the language of this finding should mirror the language of the ordinance, um, to be in compliance with the findings required by the ordinance. So by inserting this language, does the city have, attorney have any opinion on whether that would be a problem?
I, I think that in, in general, the, the findings do mirror the exact language in the, in the ordinance. However, I, I don't believe that the addition of the word largely would present any additional, uh, issue or problem for the city.
We can keep going then? I'm fine with that. I mean, if you, if you want, Ray, you can explain what you meant by largely preserve.
You okay with that, Clint?
I'm fine.
Terry? Ray, you okay with it?
I'm, I'm assuming that you don't wanna make a finding that this home being built preserves the views because we are admitting in this document that it does not preserve all the views. And so we're making a statement to convey that we understand that this is a blockage of some of the views. And so that that makes it clear that, for a precedent, we are not saying this doesn't block views, we know this blocks views.
Okay.
Yeah, that came out in the hearing process. Okay, item F, um, Ray's proposing some language here. I'll read it. To keep the proposal respects and then, uh, he wants to add general plan policy nineteen and program nineteen B through the application of the Brisbane Acres Ridge Line section of the zoning ordinance seventeen point one, two point oh, four, oh, L as in Larry. Then is suggesting to strike the topography of the site and is designed to minimize its visual impact. Significant public views of San Francisco Bay, the Brisbane Lagoon are not impacted and views of San Bruno Mountain, State and County Park are preserved.
My same question there, are those required, um, findings? And can you refresh our recollection of what the general plan policy nineteen and program nineteen?
I just thought you might ask that.
When it's memorized.
Uh, uh, policy nineteen and nineteen B, which was provided in the original materials, uh, which is referenced in several staff reports. Policy nineteen, uh, from the general plan, in the context of respecting private property rights, make every effort to preserve and enhance public views of the mountain and the bay. That's policy nineteen. And program nineteen B is consider amendments to the zoning ordinance to provide for site plan review to assure that identified vistas and public view corridors remain accessible for public enjoyment. The review should evaluate building placement, height and bulk.
Okay, thank you.
David, you're good with this language?
Yes, I think that this language, uh, is an appropriate finding that the, the council could find. Uh, I think that some further discussion perhaps after going through the entire document, uh, for the council to have any questions answered, uh, would also be appropriate. But if the council agrees on this language, then it, it certainly is acceptable.
And striking the language that was there regarding topography and significant public views being, not, not being impacted?
Yes.
That's okay to strike that as well?
That is.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Good? Okay, item H, um, suggested language change is to start, where it starts landscaping uses, uses plants that are compatible with the natural flora and fauna and are not invasive to the HCP area. And then it continues, landscaping is also used to, and, and add effectively screened structures and blend with the natural landscape. And I'm assuming, uh, you wanna capitalize landscaping here or take the period out? Capital. Okay. Landscaping is planned for installation that will not eventually intrude into the public view corridor. And then strike, let's see, the second sentence would be, the site provides open space area and landscaping to complement the buildings, that was stricken or suggested to be stricken. And then also after view corridor, it'd be strike separate and screened service and storage areas, break up expanses of paved area and define areas for usability and privacy. And then keep the last sentence, which is landscaping is generally water-conserving and is appropriate to the location. Staff reviewed this language? Good? Bobbing heads?
You know, I, I do have a question for you, Ray. Intruding into the public view corridor, um, both corridors from the Bay Trail looking up to the mountain and from central Brisbane looking out towards the bay?
It's my understanding that, uh, the only corridor perspective that's really been analyzed, uh, is that which is identified in the ridge line ordinance.
Okay. So, um, this is a question for you, John. I mean, uh, as conditions of approval, though, we can put language in there that, that, uh, states that vegetation won't, um, grow taller than, than the house from, from either, uh, side view.
That's correct. You could look at condition ninety and the attached conditions of approval if you wanna propose some modifications there, too.
Okay, thank you.
And that is the last of, uh, your suggestions, right, Ray?
Right.
Does anybody else have any proposed changes? Laurie?
Not to this document, but I did have some questions for staff and some statements I wanted to.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I just wanna, um, thank the public for bearing with us in this process. I think it's been really helpful to have another week, um, to allow the applicant to talk with their architect. And I, I wanna thank the applicant for really, um, taking the time to, um, in good faith, um, think about how they can mitigate the impact of their, of the proposed building. And, um, I wanna also thank the planning commission for the decision they did make. I did ask some questions of staff, um, by email, um, ahead of time and received some responses and I, I wanna go over some of those. So when I first read the staff report, I had, I had thought that the building was gonna be proposed to be moved down a foot and a half down the hillside, but then after reading it and reviewing the answers, I realized it's actually gonna be further graded in place, just further down into the ground. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and I had asked, how was it that this one point five feet was, um, how did, how did the applicant come up with that number? And the response was that that was the maximum that they could drop the pad without completely redesigning the drainage system. Is there anything further that you'd like to add?
There are also some implications on the, um, the down slope, um, windows and if you were to lower it further in terms of accessibility of light on some of those downstairs levels as well, but the drainage seemed to be the driving technical issue.
Okay. And, um, I had asked, has a city engineer considered the impact of the additional grading on the stability of the hillside? stability of the hillside?
In the previous preliminary geotechnical work that was done, it contemplated grading that was quite similar to what is now proposed. So preliminarily, it's been evaluated as part of any grading permit the city engineer will issue. He'll make a full geotechnical assessment at that point as well. So he'll have an opportunity to review that in fine detail as part of the grading permit issuance.
Okay. And with respect to the roof line, the garage roof line has been, or the garage height, I should say, there's two garages that are, that were originally eight feet and one was, I believe, 10. And one was dropped to be in line with the other two, the westernmost garage door. And I'm wondering, what was the reason for that change?
I believe the applicant felt that was being responsive to some of the observations that were raised at the previous hearing, that it was sort of out of character for one garage door to be taller than the other two. So he just wanted to make them uniform.
Okay. Okay. Those were all the questions I had. And with these changes, I would be comfortable knowing that this is the most that the applicant can do to mitigate it. I believe that it would still be in line with the ordinance. I really thank them for coming to the table and agreeing to work with the community on this.
Okay. Terry, you got any clarifications, questions?
I am very glad that we did include item 15 in the conditions of approval, which is to keep the, let's see, how can I word that? The property owner is going to execute and record a declaration of restrictions regarding the status of the courtyard. And I don't have any questions for staff. I think I have some items for discussion once other questions for staff have been completed.
Ray, now's a good time to bring it up. Aaron?
I don't have any questions for staff, though, you know, I do have something that I would like to share with the council and also with the community. You know, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, being on the planning commission back in '06, actually '05, you know, working with this particular property, I wanted to dig up some visuals of what was originally proposed by Thomas, at A. Thomas. And unfortunately, the projection equipment is not working. So I only have this thing right here. But basically, this is the first proposal that was brought before the planning commission back in '05. And that the west view, and I can send this down, if you want to see it. The west view, basically the view that you would see from the street, was at 35 feet. And that what we have today is somewhere around 11 to 13 feet in height. Of course, that was not approved by the planning commission. We worked with the applicant and the community. And eventually, what you see today is what had been negotiated, you know, through all those meetings with the planning commission, to come up with something that stepped down the hillside. The original proposal back in '05 was to build a two-story building or house at the highest point of the property. And of course, that was not going to, that wasn't going to fly, you know, with anybody. And we worked together to come up with something that would be acceptable and within the guidelines of our municipal code. And so to have the applicant even go further and be respectful of our concerns, listening also to the community and making those changes, that will be at a significant increase in cost to him, but willing to work in good faith. I applaud you for that. And so, you know, I just wanted to share this information with all of you, that this has been a process. We started up here and now we're here. And so, you know, I'm quite comfortable with what is being proposed.
Terry, go ahead.
So while I appreciate that the applicant came in and talked with city, the city staff, and worked on doing something to make us a little more comfortable with approving this project, I'm not sure that just digging it a little lower makes the building more acceptable to me or more that it is what I was looking for. I was hoping to see some reduction in the bulk and the mass of the project because I do think that it does block the view of the mountain. And so I was hoping to see some concessions on the owner's part besides just burying it a little bit deeper and digging out a little bit more or quite a bit more ground. I don't think that the project really takes into account the mass as it should for our hillside ordinance. And I take exception to findings B, that the proposal's scale, form, and proportion are harmonious with the surrounding area and the hillside. I don't think it's very harmonious. I still think it's very large and bulky and doesn't take that into account with any kind of articulation. It is just there. So I'm disappointed that we didn't get something besides just a paddle elevation change. And I understand that with just a week, it's hard for the designer to come up with something that would change architecturally because that would take quite a bit of architectural work to make a change, especially in the timeframe that was allotted. So those are my comments.
Actually, if we were asking for architectural changes, it would have had to go back to the planning commission, I think. If we were asking for significant stuff, so I guess the charge was as if the applicant was willing to go back and change something because looking back last week, I mean, we were kind of about as split as the community was, you know, some were for it, some weren't. And council is that way. And where it came down is if the applicant was willing to make some adjustments where it didn't have to go back to the planning commission. And so that's really kind of what it was.
Well, we had talked somewhat about lowering some roof lines, but I wasn't surprised that the lowering of the roof lines were at just lowering the entire building, you know, sinking it down in a little bit instead of actually lowering or reducing the bulk at all. So that's my comment, and I'm happy to hear from the rest of the council.
Yes. So I've been having, the conversation I've been having is with myself. And I've been struggling really greatly with this issue. Clark, last time said that he and I have our fingerprints all over the open space plan since we were a part of the generation in writing of that plan. But it's also true that our fingerprints are all over the general plan because we were part of the process of creating these policies. And we have a lot of really good policies. The problem has become in my mind that we haven't really effectively implemented a lot of the policies in the general plan in the zoning ordinance. But the way the law works, you have to go with what's in the law, what's in the zoning And there are some, you know, serious issues. I find problems with quite a few of the presumptions of the zoning ordinance. I have a problem with the interior courtyard not being accounted as part of lot coverage. That doesn't make any sense to me. I have a problem with the HCP saying that 40% of all properties have to have set aside for the HCP, even though some places it doesn't make any sense, other places it ought to be more. The whole idea of bulk is not really defined at all. I mean, there are some things that could be done, but it's not really spelled out anywhere. The whole idea of the story poles and taking photos from the Bay Trail hasn't proved to be very useful. And then we have all these allowances in the Brisbane Acres, you know, for really big buildings, big single-family residences. And of course, the reason for that originally was the whole density transfer idea, that you know, you can only allow a few things up on top and then people would be happy to buy one of those and contribute it. And then, you know, they could build more stuff down at the bottom was kind of the idea. And that's on the map that's been provided to us. And so that was an idea that maybe needs to be revisited. I mean, there are a whole bunch of things here that are problematic in my mind, and that's why I think it's been very useful to have this conversation and this discussion and to look carefully at what we have in the ordinances, the general plan policies that really haven't been effectively implemented yet, in my opinion. And we ought to really revisit that. And we need to revisit some of the zoning ordinances, the way they are written and implemented. But on the other hand, you have all these things in place. And I remember Ron Davis saying, you know, people need to know what the rules are. And there are these rules. And 5,500 square foot, single-family residences allowed in the Brisbane Acres. May not be the world's best idea in some places, but that's the rule. And I'm not happy with the rule. And I'm not happy with a lot of the rules, but that's the law. So the struggle I've been having with myself, my conversation is, okay, there are a lot of these things that are problematic for me. You know, I am not comfortable with the building and its size and its bulk and its height, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm certainly not going to say I'm comfortable with it. But on the other hand, so far as I can figure out, it comes pretty close to meeting what's in the law. So the problem is our rules. But if somebody has lived by the rules, at least as far as I can tell, it seems only appropriate to, you know, to let them go ahead as long as the findings do not say something which is untrue. And that's why I did the revision of the findings, you know. It doesn't preserve the views in that corridor. Largely, it does, but there are some of it's going to be blocked. And so we need to say that. And we need to recognize that it really only refers to certain policies of the general plan and not all of them because there are a lot more provisions in the general plan about ridgeline development than, and hillside development than gets referenced in 19 and 19B and in the ridgeline ordinance. So there's a lot more work we need to do, but we haven't done it. And I really hope we do it now. I mean, I really am looking forward to, you know, putting this on our agenda and working together with the planning commission and let's get these things clear. And in my view, the most important thing to preserve among all the things is the natural ridgelines in places where they're developed and hasn't occurred yet. I'm really worried about the southeast ridge because that's wonderful butterfly habitat. And it's not really developed yet by and large, and it's still in private ownership. I mean, that, and that, you know, that's one of the things that's referenced in the general plan. We really don't have an effective way of dealing with that, in my view. So we really have to address all these things. But as I've said, they are not effectively addressed in the zoning ordinance. So I find myself in the position that as long as the findings don't say something which I find untrue, then I could sort of swallow and say, okay, the applicant's lived up to the law, as flawed as it is, and so I guess we have to approve it. But we shouldn't say that it does all these nice things because it really doesn't. But as long as we say it largely preserves a view, I mean, as long as we got the right kind of landscaping there and as long as we recognize that we're dealing with the ridgeline ordinance as an interpretation of policy 19 and Program 19B, then I swallow and say, oh, God, I guess we have to say yes to the project, living within the law. That's kind of my, I don't like the law, but that's the law. And another thing I want to say is that the law is really about, the zoning ordinance is really about physical things. It's about land use. It's about views. And then variations from them. There's nothing in there about, you know, is this a good family or not, or are they going to actually stay there or not, or are they in financial trouble? There is nothing in the law about any of those things. And so in my view, all that conversation, unfortunate conversation, is irrelevant. What counts is the application satisfy the law, period. And as long as it does that, in my mind, and the findings are not untrue, I swallow, say, okay, I guess we have to go along.
Thank you, Ray. Laurie?
Well, I'm in agreement with what Ray said. I believe that, you know, it does comply with the law as it's written. And, you know, there is no law against having a house of this size or of this bulk. That may be an issue that people have with it, but that's not, you know, within our authority to say, no, you can't build a house that big. I believe that the house, you know, with the modifications does satisfy the findings and we have to balance the interests of the community with the interests of the property owner. And with those modifications, I think that we have to let it go forward. So I agree that there are many modifications, many, many changes that I can see that we would need to make to the zoning ordinance. And I look forward to having that conversation at a separate time. I already have made a list of issues to discuss when that comes up. So I stand by what I said before, that, you know, with the, with the changes that have now been proposed, I believe that we would have to approve. now been proposed, I, I believe that we would have to approve this.
Cliff?
You did a great job, Ray, I think, articulating your position. I, I, I think, I think we probably all agree, I mean, ever since this thing has been before the community, you know, it's, it's been a difficult project to, to work with because of its location. You know, I think we, we tried to give clarification after it was previously approved with the new ordinance. Obviously, we still need to work on it, but you, you know, you, you can't hold someone hostage while you're tinkering with it. You know, we need to do our, our job in, in, you know, moving forward. You know, one of the things that, that, you know, we've talked about in regards to the landscaping, I know, John, you said that in one of the conditions of approval, I guess it was ninety in regards to landscape and the height, I, I don't have those conditions in front of me, but do we also talk about installing an irrigation system so that we make sure that the vegetation is taken care of, that we're not relying on someone watering so that the vegetation stays alive? Okay. So, you know, I, again, I like your, your modification to the findings. I think it, it makes it appropriate, and so I, I'm in favor of, of moving forward with the project as well.
Okay, Terry, wish to add anything else?
Well, again, I, while it is possible, and it seems that, that the council is stating that this project meets legal precedent or legal tests, I don't think it meets the intent of our hillside law or our intent of the ridgeline ordinance. I don't think it's addressed bulk. I don't think it's done the best it could. And, you know, if we wrote a bad ordinance, an unenforceable ordinance, then shame on us, and shame on our legal team, and shame on our planning team if we didn't do it the way the public intended. But from the discussion that's come and the comments from the public, obviously, we didn't do a good job the first time around. And that's very sad. It's sad for the applicant who's, you know, tried to go with the letter of the law, and it's sad for the people who put so much into creating the ordinance and creating our, our reasonings for how we go about looking at projects and deciding if they are of community value. And just having those words of community value, and having them mean so many different things to so many different people, is something that I love about Brisbane, but yet it's a fatal flaw, and it may be a fatal flaw for us, that we don't have something concrete written down that is enforceable. And that is just ultimately the sad part to me, is that I feel that while we have a really great wish list of how we would like to see things happen and what should be important to us, we don't have an adequate, adequate way to enforce it. And that is, I think, criminal.
Strong words.
It is.
Actually, I recall acres, that they used to be able to build, I think up to, if it was one acre, up to two ten thousand square foot structures, maybe even more. So it's been reduced almost fifty percent. I mean, that's for sure, so, I mean, that's something that, you know, I mean, to certainly take under advice. Not everybody may agree, and it might be something, you know, that we gather data on, you know, in the future. Certainly, the point's well taken, you know, everybody's has good ideas, a lot of passion the last couple of weeks on both sides, those that support it, those that don't support it, you know, for various reasons. But it is within the law, and it's really kind of subject to one's own interpretation. And sometimes you draw things black and white. You don't want to put yourself in the position where the city's going to be purchasing it. It can be called, in the city attorney, it can be called the taking of property, and so you have to have flexibility in your ordinances, you know, while at the same time, you know, looking at what you can do, what you can't do. So that's a thing that you have to be careful of, and I know when this ordinance was reviewed before, that was one of the things that was taken into consideration, knowing that it would create subjectivity. And design review is, is tough, because it's like public art. Seeing Kevin Fryer in the back, you know, we had a discussion about public art, that it's really kind of subject to one's own interpretation. Some people think it's ugly, some think, people think it's beautiful, and, you know, design review is the same thing. It's like public art, in a way, but this is something that's going to stay there. So I don't have anything else to say, other than if there's, if he wishes to make a motion with the amended language, I'm okay with the amended language. And I'm sure, Ray, you'll give this to the city clerk, and we'll be ready to go. So anybody wish to make a motion to, and I guess the motion would be to deny the appeal and then accept amended language, or city attorney, you want to?
It, it would not be a, a straight denial, because the council is modifying the conditions of, of approval and the, and the findings. So it would be a motion to modify the, the planning commission's action, consistent with the revised findings and conditions of approval.
Okay. Does anybody want to wish?
No one wants to make that motion. I figure you would do it, Ray, since you put all the effort into modifying it. But, you know, I, I, I'll make that motion, because I think it's the, the right thing to do. And I know that, I know that there's folks nodding that aren't going to like it, but, you know, I, that's what I think is fair. So I make a motion to modify the planning commission's recommendation for approval with the modifications that are in the resolution that are before us, and also the additions to the conditions of approval.
Findings?
We also made some, did we make any changes?
There's three things.
Yeah.
The resolution, the findings, and the conditions of approval. Right?
Is that a second?
I was trying to avoid that.
Come on, Ray.
Ah, nobody else will do it. Okay, I'll second it.
Motion of second, any further counsel discussion? Okay, all in favor? Bye?
Bye.
Bye. Oppose?
Opposed.
Eight forty-one. Thank you, everybody. I know this has been a tough one for you, so. Certainly tough on counsel, too. And on the new business, item A, which is consider adoption of resolution number two thousand fourteen dash oh four, approving a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with firefighter association.
Yes. As you, if you recall, we had meetings in December regarding approving a number of memorandums of understanding. This is the latest one, under the same guidelines that we had brought the other ones forward. We are looking at having the health insurance go forward with a five, for a five to six percent rate increase, depending on what the Kaiser rate increases for that year. The method of determining how much the city will increase its contribution towards health insurance would be a zero to three percent rate increase, and the Kaiser rate would be a zero, would provide that same rate increase for what we would contribute towards health insurance, and increase between three and six percent. The employees would be responsible for increases above six percent in Kaiser, up to twelve percent would be split between the employee and the city, contributing more to health insurance. If at any given point, the increase in Kaiser does not require the city to contribute five percent, then the difference between what the city contributes and the five percent increase would be put into a health fund, where the employees are still trying to figure out how to use that in the future. For an increase in salaries, there is a two point one percent, a two to three percent increase in July, based on CPI. We got the CPI back, which we did not have at the last time, because it was the one that was done in December, and the annual increase for last year was a two point one percent. So there will be a two point one percent increase for this in the upcoming year. And then for next fiscal year, and it's been a while since I actually wrote this, I apologize, it is a three to five percent for the fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, fifteen sixteen. There's also a five hundred dollar, one-time payment to the employees. This is similar to what you had done for the mid-management professional in the commanders' group. And then the other aspect of it is there is a one-time, one thousand dollar contribution to the employee health fund to pay for increased, potential increases in the future. And there is also the similar language that we have for the medical, the medical after retirement, whereas before we used to provide a stipend for employees, we now do a defined contribution plan instead of a defined benefit plan. Oh, it's between, Clay, Clay called me on it. It's two to four percent for next year, for the fifteen sixteen. I apologize. I was thinking it was between three and five. It's between two and four. And it was in my staff report that I wrote. So it's the same, it's a similar contract that we have for the other bargaining groups that have settled. If there are any questions?
Counsel questions?
I do not.
Go ahead.
I do not, I don't have any questions.
Terry, go ahead.
I did have a, a couple of questions. It seemed that when we were negotiating, and forgive me, it has been a long time since we talked about the other contracts and this contract. Perhaps it's been discussed in subcommittee, but not, I need to refresh our course. It seemed that the one-time payment that we gave to other employees was a negotiating tool for them to settle quickly and to come to an agreement. And this seems that they've gotten more concessions than we've gotten from other?
No, it's, it's the same, it's the same ones. What they, what the, what the fire did is that they were not, could not get to a meeting with all of their employees in time to be able to bring it back in December. So what they said is they signed a tentative agreement or a letter of understanding, sorry, to impose the health insurance changes that the city council wanted on themselves, and given that, that was the big dollar cost item, and that this contract is similar to all the others, that the five hundred dollars seemed as an appropriate one-time payment, because they basically brought the same contract to the city, for the city council that all the other ones did. It wasn't any, there aren't any additions here that the other groups did not sign. And they provided the information, and they provided the letter of agreement in time for us to be able to implement health insurance in the way that we implemented all the others.
Okay, then I'm, I'm misremembering what our other contracts were, so forgive me.
Okay, I can talk to you later.
Laurie, you have anything?
I don't have any.
Ray?
No, I'm, if you're willing, I'd be prepared to move the approval of the resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
Seven.
Motion of second, to approve resolution number two thousand fourteen dash four, dash oh four. Any further discussion? All in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Oppose? Okay. Item B, under new business, consider approval of skateboard park design request for proposals.
Yes. The city council's facility subcommittee met jointly with the Parks and Recreation Commission on, I'm looking for it in my staff report, I apologize, a couple of weeks ago to discuss the skateboard park. The conversation was over the RFP. What, at the last city council meeting, there was a conversation about having the designers come up with three different sizes, and to provide designs for the three different sizes. Those sizes were the current size of the skateboard park. The current size of the skateboard park expanded to the property lines without changing the basketball court. And then the third one was to move the basketball court to the sidewalk against Park Place, and then expand the, not take up any more space of the basketball court, and to expand the skateboard park to that size. At the subcommittee, joint subcommittee meetings, there was a member of the public who suggested instead of looking just at expanding the size of the skateboard park, but maybe create a second, smaller spot where the current, between the basketball court and Park Place. What that would allow people to do, would be able to use the bigger skateboard park for more of a flow kind of skateboard park, and you really get maybe two or three people being able to use that skateboard park at any given time. And then additional people would be able to use what would be considered a skate spot, which would be the smaller area next to the basketball court, between the basketball court and Park Place. So what we have done is provided in the RFP all four dimensions, so that way the joint subcommittee, when we get through to the process of the design, the joint subcommittee can work, look at all four different sizes, see how they could be used in the city, see what the costs would, would be for the city, and then be able to make a recommendation to the city council. So what we were trying to do here was provide as much flexibility in how the skateboard park could be used and designed for future council consideration. At this point, there's still not a cost associated with it, because what we would do is put this out for a bid. We were anticipating that the period for the bid would be about a month, at which point we would get the proposals back, sorry, the proposals, not bids. We'd get the proposals back, it would go through a review process of the joint subcommittees. The joint subcommittees would make a recommendation on the design firm, then the city council would, at that point in time, be able to make a, a vote on the design firm, and to let you know there is about seven thousand dollars set aside in parks facility funds for this kind of a project, that the city council would like to use it for that. After the, if the city council chooses the design firm, there would be a public process working with the, with the interested parties to develop what would, the look for the four different sizes. That would be brought back to the, the joint subcommittee, for the joint subcommittee to review and make a recommendation to the city council as to which design would be completed, at which point the design firm would then complete the design and draw up bidding documents that we could bid on. We would then have council approve that to be put out to bid, and we would also have an engineer's estimate, so at that point in time, the city council and the community would understand what the overall cost would be, and we can develop a financing plan for it at that time before we bid it out, to make sure that this, it is a project that the city council would want to do. I think that covered what happened at the... I think that covered what happened at the subcommittee meeting.
In its entirety.
It may have actually taken us longer for me to explain it than the subcommittee was.
I think it did.
Yeah, I heard that was a quick meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it was, you know, it was.
It was thorough.
It was just very thorough, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, it was very straightforward and stuff, and the, so, council questions, staff?
So we're, we're looking at getting a, putting out a request for proposal for designing four different skate parks.
Four different, four different sizes.
Which would be four different skate parks.
Four different versions, yeah.
Four different versions. I mean, what you would probably imagine is that there would be one basic version, and then, as you increase the size of it, you might add an element or two to it. So it won't be, it wouldn't be math, a lot of redesign for the three, the three, that would be at, you know, at the size of the current skateboard, skate park.
So, we're not anticipating that having four versions is going to increase the bid, proposed bid price significantly?
Not significantly, because we're not asking them to take them to completion. If we were to ask them to take them to completion, it probably would.
And if we get the four designs, are those going to come with any anticip, at that point, we still won't have any anticipated costs for version A, B, C, or D?
We would have preliminary costs, they would be able to give an estimate as to what those would be. However, until they are, you know, until you create the actual bid specifications, you would, at that point, you would have a better engineer's estimate. But you would have an, you would get an estimate with each of the four designs. So you would be able to say.
Ballpark.
A ballpark estimate.
Or a skate park.
Yes.
Yes. Hey, I'm glad you guys can still laugh. Thank you.
Laurie?
Thank you. So in the request for proposals attached to the staff report, it talks about a couple of, a couple of things that I had questions on. So it, all the proposals are asked for, we're all, we're talking about concrete skate parks. Was that the only material that was recommended here? And would we be limiting ourselves by just limiting it to concrete skate parks?
The major issue that we're facing with the skateboard is the surface of the park. So what we would want to have is that the surface of the park be concrete, you know, working with the designers, you know, the, potentially, we could have the elements be of different substances. But from a rideability perspective, from a longevity perspective, concrete would, you know, if the cost is reasonable, would probably be the best alternative for the city, because it would last the longest. I mean, if you look at what our current elements look like, and you look at the maintenance that we've had to do over the years on the wooden ramp, it is, it is, it costs more to maintain than a concrete skateboard park would.
Okay, and if it were concrete, would that allow for any particular designs? Like, for example, I was, I was actually reading an article in the Wall Street Journal a week or two ago, and there's a picture of this natural, they called it a playscape. It was like, it was someone's backyard, they had their own skateboard, like, half-pipe, and it, it was made to look like, kind of brown in color, and it looked like it blended in with the environment. And I thought, wow, that's really neat, that, you know, you can almost make it like, you know, like, like a work of art, something that really blends in with the environment. And I thought that might be something worth considering here, but I didn't know if materials that might be used, if we use the concrete, whether those designs might be possible with that material. I don't know if there's an answer to that.
Having talked with a couple of the design firms, they have said that having, you know, using concrete and doing things like painting it or putting murals on it is something that they have done in other skateboard parks. They've used, added color to concrete as well, if you want to have.
Okay.
Something slightly different.
So it's not going to look like this gray slab?
It could. I mean, obviously, you know, the more we do with the, some of the design features, the more it could cost us.
Okay, right.
And that would probably be a decision that we would want to make, you know, have the subcommittee review and then bring to council as to how to do that.
Okay, thank you. And the second paragraph in the introduction on the request for proposals talks about it featuring a mix of street and transition style terrain. Can you explain what that is?
No. But Mike could, I think. Can you please? I stole this, I stole this from other places.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Michael Barnes, I'm a member of Brisbane resident. Street skating is like the plaza here at City Hall. Usually, it's just steps, it's what they call ledges, that they can ollie up onto and grind on. A flow course is more ramps and roll-ins and things where you don't have to, you don't have to jump up on. So, a flow course is great for an old guy like me, and a street course is great for my son, kind of another way to think about it. The street is more high-impact, it's what guys do in San Francisco. Street comes from, really, skating in San Francisco, more or less, in the last thirty years. Guys would go up to Chinatown, there's places all over the city, there were names that are historic in skateboarding, and it's all just skating on natural city features. Flow course is more just pumping, where you use your body weight to pump on the skateboard like kids pump on a swing, to give yourself momentum and inertia to go around the course.
And flow courses, the same as transition style?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, transition is, you go up one, one incline, and maybe you come down the other side of a pyramid, let's say, that's a transition.
Okay.
I'm not really being that helpful, am I?
No, I think you're.
Well, I'm sure the designers themselves would know, but it's good for us to know what we're asking for. Thank you. And then, as it says in the staff report, there were initially three design, three sizes, and then a member of the public had suggested this skate spot. So would this skate spot be in addition to one of the other three that get, that would get selected, or would the skate spot be a separate skate park that we would, we would be deciding between one of these four, or one of the three plus the skate spot?
That would be the decision of the city council. So they would do all four sizes for us, and then the city council would decide what would fit best in our community. What they made, what the city council may decide is that one of the sizes plus a skate spot would be good, because it would, it comes within what would be considered a reasonable budget for the city, and would provide additional room for skaters. It would give, you know, there's some advantages to that. Or the city council may decide that, you know, creating the additional skate spot at this point in time may not be within the budget, but want to look at maybe potentially doing that at some point in the future, someplace else. So I think it gives the city council as much flexibility at this point as possible.
Okay. When I was looking at the request for proposal, that third paragraph on the, I guess, the first page, under introduction, the way it reads, it almost looks like there were three, and then you inserted the fourth. So it says, you know, the city is looking for a company to provide conceptual design plans for three potential skateboard park sizes. And then it goes into all three, but then, and then it adds in the additional skate spot.
You're exactly right.
So I think it should be changed from three to four.
Yes.
And then, and the last sentence, it should also, those, it references three again, twice more, the design for all three, it should be four, should include, and then budget level estimated cost of construction of all four, instead of three designs. I would suggest those changes. And, you know, I'm, I'm, those are, those are all the questions I have right now.
I have one.
I'm good.
I have one more question that, that Laurie brought up. So a skate spot is like if we designated the parking lot and features in front of City Hall as a skate spot?
What it is, it's a small, it's smaller than a park, it's just got a couple, a few elements. So, you know, in this case, you know, something the size of twenty-two by seventy, you really can't have a lot of, you know, as Mike was expressing, kind of a lot of the flow or the transitions, and you would have a few of the, maybe more of the street-style elements there, so that, you know, maybe two or three street-style elements. So it's a smaller designation within the rules of skate park design. The difference between having a pocket park versus a community park versus a regional park, they all have different kinds of definitions. So a skate spot has a slightly different definition than a skate park does. I mean, it's just, you wouldn't designate City Hall to be a skate spot, but you might sit there, because we don't want people skating on City Hall property. But you might designate the area between Park Place and the basketball court as a skate spot, and you would put concrete there, you put a couple of elements there. And that would be more of a skate spot than a skate park, because of the size.
It's a lower-key, less formal type of skating area.
Yes. Same rules for the skate park apply about helmets and all that. I mean, it's not going to change the other requirements of.
Rules for helmets.
I'm just saying they apply.
Thank you.
Anything else, Laurie?
No, no questions. Are we going to have a discussion after the public, is there a public comment period? I don't know how this is working.
No, it's not a public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess I'll, should I make some comments? Is this a point, part, place to make comments, or just ask questions?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. So I'm, you know, I, I think it's great that we are moving this forward and getting a request for proposals, because I want to see some, you know, some designs and some concrete numbers to look at. And I'm hoping at some point in the process that we also can look at, you know, comparing the skate park versus other city projects that we anticipate, you know, so we can, you know, decide, not in a vacuum, but really looking at as a whole, as of what we need, what we, what the community would like to get done in our city. So I had spoken with our city manager about a survey, and I'm, I'm hoping that that can, that process can go concurrently with, with the skate park project, but I'd be comfortable with the request for proposal going forward at this point, as there would be no financial impact at this point, it would just be getting information. And thank the public for all the public comments, and it's great to see the excitement from the community and to hear what people want in Brisbane.
That's good for me.
So is that a motion?
Sure, I can make a motion to approve the request for proposal of the skate park.
I'll second it.
With modifications to fix all the threes to fours?
Yes.
Okay, motion is second to approve with slight modifications. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose? Okay. Thank you very much. Item C, consider adoption of resolution number two thousand fourteen dash oh seven to amend the two thousand thirteen slash fourteen general fund budget.
I can't do this without overheads.
Oh. We have some to pass out to the public?
I do have a few.
Oh. Okay. Sorry, we're technically inept tonight.
Presumably, it's the technology which has failed and not the people.
Right.
I think that's the case, anyway.
Oh, I thought he was going to stand up here and give his presentation, but, no, no, that's okay.
So, this is the mid-year budget review for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. The next page is the city's adopted budget. We, we anticipated an beginning fund balance of nine million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We had revenues projected at twelve million six hundred and six thousand dollars, that included transfers in. We had expenditures projected at thirteen million four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, and that included our transfers out, for an ending fund balance of nine million thirty-two thousand dollars. On the reestimated budget, I had a, we actually ended last fiscal year, fiscal year twelve thirteen, with ten million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, not the nine million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand we had projected at the beginning of the budget process. So we ended the fiscal year last year a million dollars better than we had anticipated. Based on reestimating the budget in December, we anticipate revenues of twelve million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. That is slightly down from what we had in the adopted budget. But if the city council remembers, the city council took a motion to not make the transfer from the liability fund to the general fund, and that was for about six hundred thousand dollars. So we actually have revenues that are slightly higher than projected, but we have a, we removed that transfer to preserve our liability fund. We have put projected expenditures now of thirteen million five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, and this is instead of the expenditures of thirteen million four fifty-three. There's a slight increase, and I'll talk about that later. For an ending fund balance of nine million seven hundred and eighty thousand, this is different from what I had in the staff report, because when I was putting this together, I realized what I did in the staff report was pretended that the beginning fund balance was the, actually, the ending fund balance. And I did not take into account the eight hundred thousand dollar deficit that we were anticipating when we took in, did the budget this year. So that was the difference, and I apologize for that. So we are anticipating an ending fund balance of nine million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well, because I think we'll actually do better than that, and I'll explain it as I go through. On the revenue side for this year, our transient occupancy tax, I'm estimating at three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars higher than we had in the budget. We budgeted, I budgeted about one point six million dollars, and we're bringing in about one million nine hundred and fifty thousand. I just looked at the numbers through our checks that we have received in February, and my guess is we actually might top two million this year. So I'm still a little bit, you know, hesitant in projecting a two million dollar revenue source, we haven't seen that yet. So I would rather wait until we get a little bit closer to the end of the year, and then if we do get the two million dollars, that money would just fall into the fund balance. We had a prior year property tax of one, of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. This was an interesting one. We received a refund, or we received prior year collections because walmart.com got a refund in the redevelopment agency. And I talked about this with the successor agency issue. The way that the county distributes property tax, it's because, based on AB eight, what they had said was that because the AB eight factor should have been different, our city should have received a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars more in property tax during the period of time where Walmart was overpaying their taxes. I have a different, I have a difference of opinion with them, but they're the ones who give us the money, so they are right.
That's right, you didn't complain.
What?
You didn't complain.
I did not complain. Actually, I talked to them three times about it. I figured after three times, it was not worth carrying the conversation any further. Our grading permits and inspections is up higher, about eighty-seven thousand dollars than anticipated. A lot of this is because we've got more work going on at the ridge. Our truck haul fees, I'm projecting at fifty-five thousand dollars higher. This is what we have taken in through November. We will be getting, I mean, I would assume that we're going to get more in truck haul fees between, you know, you know, December and June, but I did not want to make any estimates, because I, you know, don't want to presume what is happening with the truck hauling going on at the, on the baylands. So if we do receive more money, that will be another addition to our reserve above the nine million seven hundred thousand I was projecting. Our unsecured property tax is fifty-two thousand dollars higher than projected. We've seen an increase in unsecured property tax. The big reason for that is, once again, we receive information based on AB eight, so it may not necessarily just be what's going on in our town, but what goes on. it may not necessarily just be what's going on in our town, but what goes on throughout the county. We received forty-five thousand dollars for insurance reimbursement, you had heard about this, with our police car. So when we had our police car that we had to pay for, we also received forty-five thousand dollars in insurance reimbursements. And then, the downside is we are receiving no money this year in sales taxes, property tax. This is the triple flip that Governor Schwarzenegger, when he passed the bonds for the, to bail the state out a few years ago, what they did is, they allocated city sales tax money to pay for state bonds. So we only received three-quarters of our one percent, and then the other one-quarter of a percent the state takes to pay off their bonds. And then what the state is going, what the state said is that the cities could get reimbursed for their quarter percent in sales tax from the education revenue augmentation fund of the county, and then any money that the state needs to provide to the school districts, it would provide to the school districts. So it's called a triple flip, because we're moving money three times in order to pay a bond. And the reason the state needed to do that was they needed a new revenue source to pay off the bonds. What has happened is our, the San Mateo County's augmentation revenue, educational revenue augmentation fund, ERAF fund, does not have enough money to make these payments this year.
To us.
They, to us.
All cities.
And, all the cities have had a reduction in their property, sales taxes, property tax. The state, the county is obviously sending a letter and requesting the state to make good on that. However, I'm not sure when that will be, so I don't want to budget for it.
So we're getting an IOU.
Well, the county is hoping they'll get an IOU.
In all this, because former Governor Schwarzenegger repealed the vehicle license fee.
That was part of it, yes. It's because he repealed the vehicle license fee. I, the budget subcommittee, the finance subcommittee spent more time going over this. As Cliff said earlier, another area where we are down in revenue is facility rentals. We are down about thirty thousand dollars in facility rentals in Mission Blue. We raised the rates for residents, because one of the issues that we were having was non-residents were claiming to be residents, and we looked at how we compared to other similar venues up and down the peninsula, and we thought we could raise rates without having a great impact on our rentals. Last year, we did have a impact on our rentals, which is why we're down in revenue now. We are beginning to get a little bit of a pickup, is what my staff is telling me, in rentals, but, you know, that may be something that, as a city, we may want to look at. You know, there's a, do we want to lower our rates, get more rentals back, or do we want to say that, you know, we're using the Mission Blue Center for the purposes we want to use the Mission Blue Center for? You know, do we want to be the every-weekend wedding party? Do we, or do we want to use it for the kinds of things like BDW, for the Live at Mission Blue, for the artist evening sharing? So I think the Parks and Recreation Commission needs to take a look at that and really decide what they're trying to use Mission Blue for, before we bring that back to the city council. So there are some changes, so there's a lot of positive changes to the revenues this year, and as I said, I think even these, I'm slightly underprojecting. And I just, this evening, received our latest information, our latest sales tax quarter, and it was higher than I had anticipated. And I don't know why that is yet, so I need to do a little bit more research, but even our sales tax might be better off than I had thought. But I need to find out why. Other things on revenues on the next page that are not in here, as I, there is no projection on the liquid storage tax that the voters passed in November. I wouldn't, we are anticipating getting revenue prior to June, but since this has not yet been adopted, I did not include it in my reprojections. So that's another area where I think we will do better in revenues. As I said, the truck haul fees are only revenues through December, so we will see that go up higher. And then transient occupancy stacks, as I told you, it's still improving through February. Looking at it through February, I do, at this point in time, I do think we're gonna get over two million dollars and not the one million nine hundred and fifty thousand. So I can see us having, you know, our revenues being, you know, potentially three to four hundred thousand more than projected, even with these numbers. Looking at the expenditure side, there was a couple of previous council actions that increased the budget. One of them was the police vehicle, which I said we received the insurance reimbursements for, and then there was the police record system. Then on the public, for public works, there were a number of projects that were carried over from the previous year due to changes in staff. If you remember, one of our key staff people passed away last, a year ago, November. He was a team leader for our maintenance, so there was a, so as we brought new staff on, up to speed on those things, some of those projects may have taken a little bit longer than if we had the staff here all year long, and there may have been a more, making sure that all the things in the budget got completed. And then, of course, there's the timing of the bills. So what happens a lot of the times in public works is that they wait until May and June to figure out if there had been any emergencies or urgent issues that they needed to cover out of their budget, and then if there weren't, they go back and do the repairs as projected. But if they do a repair in June, we may not see the bill until August or September. So because of that, we cannot pay for it out of the previous year budget, and the expenditure, and the, it falls into the fund balance, and then from the fund balance, it should be put back into the budget to pay for last year's expenditures. A number of these kinds of projects were the Ice House Hill rock debris, which I know you got, you had looked at, and included the geotechnical reports. There was weed abatement, there were some street repairs that needed to be done, erosion control on San Bruno Avenue, some pool facility repairs, some deferred maintenance at Silver Spot Playground, they needed to have their sand turned and other, and add, have sand added to it, and then there were some landscape maintenance. So all those things were issues. If you look at what we're reprojecting, about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in additional expenditures, you know, if you look at the police vehicle at forty-five thousand, the police record systems at a hundred and thirty-one thousand, and some of these at about forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of expenditures, you're, what you really notice is that there is a savings throughout the rest of the budget. Otherwise, we'd be more than a hundred and forty-one thousand with expenditures higher than projected. Some of the expenditures, some of the expenditures that I have not put in, that I do know we'll have additional savings on, we still have two police openings, so we have not filled all of our police openings. We had one opening left, and then we had one officer leave us, and then, as you know, we're going to, I'm going to spend some time in Half Moon Bay over the next three to four months, and Half Moon Bay will be paying Brisbane eighty percent of my total cost, which would not just be my salary, but also benefits and any insurance costs that are associated with me, and that is not included in the reprojections. So expenditures, we will probably do better than I'm showing at this point in time, they'll be lower, and revenues will be higher. So whereas, at this point in time, you know, mathematically, we're adding up to a fund balance of nine million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I would anticipate that by the end of the year, we will have a ending fund balance of above ten million dollars. And just to note that, just because we have an ending fund balance of ten million dollars does not mean that's all in cash. There's a number of things that are non-cash items, and one of which, as you know, is the successor agency owes the general fund money. So until that gets paid off, it's not cash, but it's still part of fund balance. So looking at our fund balance current policy, we have expenditure, the current council policy is to have a fund balance of fifty percent of expenditures, a minimum. Our current expenditures are thirteen million five hundred and ninety-four thousand, as is what our new projection is. Fifty percent of that would be six million seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we have available, by, at the end of the year, we'll have available reserves of a little, right around three million dollars. And what I would, we talked with, about this with the council's budget finance committee, and what they're looking at doing over the next nine months is to come back with a fund balance policy and uses. And among these uses would be our Gatsby forty-five reserves. Gatsby forty-five is our non-pension-related retirement expenses, so that's one of the things we need to look at. We also have a number of capital projects that we're, probably might want to take a look at, and then, or we have not put aside money for equipment and vehicle replacement. So there's a number of uses for this money that we need. So as opposed to, you know, reallocating it at this point in time, or probably even in the budget year, the anticipation is that as the budget, finance and budget subcommittee works through their, their work, they would come back with recommendations on how to use fund balance going forward. And with that, I am done with my presentation. If there are any questions on any line item, I'm more than happy to answer them. And what we need, since the budget was adopted by resolution, changes to the budget should be adopted by resolution, and that's why you have the resolution attached.
Okay. Before we take council questions, we are past the magic hour of ten-thirty, so anybody wish to make a motion to extend the meeting?
I'll make the motion to extend the meeting to eleven.
Second.
We'll probably go past that, but, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Eleven PM is the, okay, question, council questions?
I have one for staff. On the revenues, the, these are net increases through the current period, or the, what...
What I'm projecting for the full, for the fiscal year. So these are what I would project, what we would receive as of June thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen.
Your revenues that are over the, the positive and negative numbers?
Yes.
Are what you're expecting through, not prorated through the midterm or three-quarter term?
No. That's what I would project for the full year.
Okay.
And as I said, I think I'm still being a little bit conservative on...
You usually are. Thank you.
Cliff?
Just one question, Stuart. In regards to revenues, the, the revenue that we received from recology, is that a set amount, or is it...
It is a set amount.
It is a set amount.
We received our first payment in December, we'll receive our second payment in June, and it's two-point-one million dollars this year.
And what was the money that we received in sales tax from VWR during their last year, their full, last full year?
It was, their last full year, it was right around two-point-one million. It may not have been exactly two-point-one related to, that we got from VWR itself, but the way the sales tax works is we are also part of a county pool and part of a state pool. So how they distribute county pool money and state pool money is they look at what percentage you are of the overall revenue that the county takes in, that's in the county pool, and we get that percentage. So we got some money because VWR was here from the county, we got some money from the state pool because VWR was here.
The one percent.
And all that equated to about two-point-one million.
Thank you. That's it, Cliff.
Lori?
I don't have any questions.
Ray?
Just two comments. One, a comment to what you hope Stuart will respond to, and then a question. When you were talking about the fund balances, I think what we have are a number of unfunded liabilities. No one wants to use that phrase, but in effect, that's what they are, in a number of areas, and we have to figure out how to address those, and I think that's what you're referring to, and I think the city manager is gonna be talking about that, and when we finally reschedule our study session on the work plan. But I think we just need to acknowledge that that is an issue and a problem that we have to confront. Am I right about that?
I, I absolutely agree. You know, it's always one of these questions when you're talking about unfunded liabilities or what we need to pay in the future. You know, if you can put money aside a little bit every year to make your future payments, it will be easier to make than if you have to make a payment all at once. You know, the, it's the same thing, like, when you have repairs for your car. You know, if you have an older car and you need to make repairs, the best way to do it, you put a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars every month aside, so when the repair happens, you have the money in the bank to do it. You know, we'll find, we'll figure out how to make it work at that time, but, you know, if all of a sudden you have a three-thousand-dollar car repair, and I'm saying this because it just happened to me, it's personal. But if you have a three-thousand-dollar car repair, you know, you may need to cut back what you're doing, you know, during that period of time while you're banking that payment off. So it's better to fund your unfunded liabilities, when you have an understanding of what they are, and you're in a stable budget period, which I think we are at this point in time.
Are we talking pensions? Are we talking capital improvements? What are we insinuating here?
All of the above.
All of the above. I mean, so the pensions through PERS. So there's, when you talk about a pension, and you're talking about retirement, PERS requires us to make a payment every year. The, what PERS requires us to pay makes it so that we are considered to be fully funded in our retirement payment, in our retirement liability. There's, of course, as you know, there are, there's always issues about how the stock market does, it doesn't go up, does it go down, and how that impacts our actual, where we stand. But PERS pretty much takes care of that one. The other issue that's for future payments for, not considered pension, which is why we call it OPEB, other post-employment benefits, non-pension benefits, we have that as our supplemental stipend for employees who retired, who started working for us, who worked for us prior to two thousand and eight and did not retire prior to two thousand and one. So be, so if you started, so if you started with us prior to two thousand and one and retired before two thousand and one, we don't have a great OPEB expense for you. If you re, if you started af, if you started before two thousand and one and retired after, what we have is a supplemental stipend that is based off of the Kaiser rate for insurance for employees. However, in two thousand and eight, the city council, and we were one of the, we were one of the first in the state to change that for new employees. So employees hired after two thousand and eight are on a defined contribution plan, where we make a payment to them while they are here, and we don't have future payments. So we have a very defined cost for what our OPEB liability is, and we know what that is. We do an actuarial report every couple of years, and we will be bringing that to the finance subcommittee as to how to fund that going forward. So that would be one, and as you say, you know, we've got a number of capital projects. You know, as much as we all like the pool, it is fourteen, fifteen years old now, so we need to start thinking about how do we, you know, set money aside for repairs. On that, we've got, you know, vehicles that we don't set money aside for. So, you know, if our vector was to go out, we don't have money set aside for that. So there's a number of unfunded liabilities that we have that we need to look at.
Probably the biggest is the water and sewer infrastructure.
And you've got the water and sewer infrastructure capital projects as well.
Storm drain.
Storm drain capital projects.
Unfunded.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Without a clear funding source.
Right.
At least with water and sewer, the theoretical funding source is the water and sewer rates. So there's, there's a number of issues that we need to, and as I said, now that we have a stable budget period, I think it's a good time to tackle those.
Well, it's good for the public to know also that just because we're anticipating a fund balance that looks like we have three million dollars or seven million dollars in the bank, we really don't. We need to make sure that we make or exceed our budget every year, so that we can try to put forward something to keep the programs going and, and to try to make a dent in our future liabilities.
Yes.
Yeah. Is that it, Ray?
No, I have one.
Go ahead.
But do you wanna go on?
No, no.
Yeah, the other question I had is a, is a different one, and actually, it's generated by seeing the police chief sitting back there. I don't know whether I'm correct in this, but it seems as if we're, and you can correct me, but it looks as if we're having some difficulty in hiring new police officers, and I guess my question is, am I right about that? And if I am right, what are we dealing with? What's, what's the problem?
She was gonna answer that.
Oh, good.
She's prepared to answer, if you wanna let her.
Absolutely, I do.
Yes, good eve, ugh, good evening, mayor and council. How do we turn this down a little bit? Is that better?
She startled Ron.
Woke him up.
I think, I think that's better. We started the hiring process or the application process back in July when we got the approval. And during that process, we take the, we do them in groups of doing the interview, in which is a oral board panel of some of the members within our organization. And then it goes, there's a process, then it goes to the police chief for an interview, and then we start the background process. Unfortunately, when we started the process, by the time we get through all the applicants, we got through, too, through interviews, but unfortunately, sometimes through the background process, there's something that comes up that, that I feel that may not be a right fit for our organization. So then we terminate that process and then go to the next one. So it's, the background process itself is a very timely process. And it is difficult to get good applicants when you have every agency in the county is also hiring, San Francisco, including San Francisco. So all our neighboring agencies are hiring as well. So trying to, you know, reach out to that pool and find the right applicant for our community, one that's going to fit really well, not only in our police department but in our community, it has been difficult. We just, today, as a matter of fact, we got the clearance on one more applicant that we were looking at. So we have one that started a month ago, that's in the field training process, and we have one that just got cleared today. But during that process, as you well are aware, we also did lose one officer to Hillsboro PD. So we'll start the interview process, I think we have a date, March 31st, to begin interviewing some additional applicants to fill that, that position. So we're moving along. It is a little slower than we would like to see, but we want to make sure that we do find the right fit in our organization.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Stuart, quickly, a couple of quick things. Just trip back in time, the last couple of years, we were significantly in the positive.
Right. For the last two years, I think we've ended our year with about $1 million in excess revenues and expenditures.
That's each year?
Each year.
Each year over a million, yeah. Each year is probably not going to be the case, but could be.
I don't think we'll be quite at that point, but we'll, you know, I don't think we'll be, I, I think we'll be close to being at least break even, if not slightly to the positive.
I was looking at the property taxes, the secured property taxes. What effect has the Northeast Ridge buildout in that last phase had on property taxes?
We haven't seen much yet because they haven't been sold yet. I mean, we haven't had very many sold. When it all set, when they all sell, we're anticipating at least $180,000 in new property tax revenue.
Okay. And also with that, they're supposed to give like a 1.85, 8, 9 million dollars to the city?
Something like that.
In addition? And what point does that happen?
I'd have to go back and look where Clay might know.
It's at the certificate of occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy. Is that for all the units or each unit?
By unit.
By unit. And how about the $4 million endowment fund? When does that...
Same, well, that may come in.
I think that's on building permit.
That comes in at building permit.
So that's been happening?
Right. And we've, and we've, we've written checks or done transfers to the county for what we've taken into this point.
Okay. All right. That's, that's all the questions I have, actually. Very good, thank you. Counsel's pleasure on this.
I move to adopt Resolution 2014-07, amending the general fund budget for 2013, 14.
You have a second?
Second.
Just a question.
Okay.
It's got, on the resolution, it says 17. Yours says 07.
14-17 or is it 14-07?
It's supposed to be 07.
07.
Sorry. I'll make the change.
Good catch. Says 07 at the bottom. Okay. Emotion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay. Item D, considered authorize the mayor to execute the attached consultant agreement with Metis Environmental Group and ESA Associates Incorporated to prepare the Baylands' final environmental impact report, staff report in our city.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The Baylands' EIR contract expired upon the close of the draft EIR public comment period. So new consultant agreement is proposed to allow for the preparation of the final EIR. Again, you have the draft scope of work in front of you. Would highlight one change from, I think, what we anticipated originally. We anticipated extending our contract with ESA solely to perform this work, however, do some personnel changes. The project manager and principal in charge have left ESA and formed their own firm of Metis. And so the contract would actually be with both ESA and Metis. Metis would provide the project management and administration and document preparation. ESA would provide a lot of the technical analysis and responses required to complete the final EIR. Again, we believe that it's an arrangement that will be satisfactory. It'll allow for continuity among the consultant team to, to be able to prepare the final EIR in the most efficient manner possible. So we're recommending, we're in support of that agreement. There has been one change, is we're working through the, the program for, the budget. And again, as you're aware, the property owner is UPC and to some extent, Recology will, will bear the cost of this contract that's before you. We're still working out some minor budgetary issues with them. So in lieu of authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement in front of you tonight, we're instead recommending the authorize a city manager to execute the agreement with a not-to-exceed amount, not-to-exceed amount of $771,030. That would allow for any minor modifications to scope and budget to be negotiated among the parties and, and execute the agreement to allow for the timely work on the final EIR to, to, to proceed. So that, again, staff is making that recommendation. I'm glad to entertain any questions you might have.
Council questions? Ray?
I do.
Yeah, I think we'll, all probably do. Let me go ahead. I have a, the general question, so the fact that we're, we're getting this agreement now to go ahead and respond to comments, does that mean that essentially no work has been done in response to comments so far?
I would say that's not correct. As the comments came in, there was a lot of time and effort cataloging them. A lot of what needed to happen to generate the scope of work and the budget you have in front of you is for the consultants to actually wade through the approximately 2,200 comments that were received on the draft EIR so they could determine the actual scope of work and budget required to, to meaningfully respond. But work has been proceeding in, in the actual completion of the document as well. But there's a fair amount of time that was spent just going through the comments, cataloging them, determining the, the level of effort required to respond.
So was that paid for from prior budget or is it going to be paid out of this budget?
Primarily will come out of this budget. There was some leftover budget from the draft EIR contract, but we expect recapturing that with this contract. It would be retroactive for all work that was completed on the final EIR.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions on the agreement itself, if I may. On page one, method of payment down at the bottom, this on the agreement.
Page five.
Yeah. It said, "Last sentence, city shall pay consultants no later than 30 days after approval of the invoice by city." Regardless of whether we're getting reimbursed by UPC on a timely basis.
The, and Clay may want to speak to this, but all the agreements we have with UPC require them to keep a, a fund balance for services. So they have to replenish this on an ongoing basis.
But we know they haven't always kept that agreement. So I guess that, my question is, so what if they don't, you know? Are we, are we stuck?
Well, I, there is, as I recall, Stuart could help me out with this, but I do believe that we have a, an interest rate we charge them for, for payments if they're, if they're late. But we ultimately have the authority to basically stop the process if they do not pay. And as you know, we've had this ongoing issue that we've been trying to move through, forward with both this project as well as the Recology alternate project, been wrapped into one. We are now going, in the process of, of being able to separate those out. So we'll be able to deal with UPC's project and their billing without the complication of having Recology's project in, in the way.
So therefore...
Therefore, the ability to, I think, have more concise conversations with UPC about timeliness of billing, timeliness of payments will be, we'll be able to have that, and we intend to have that.
So now I have a couple of questions. I guess my general question is, or concern, and I'd like you to address it. We've now got two companies rather than one, and we sort of have a division of responsibility, but to me, it isn't totally clear. I suspect there will be overlaps in some things, the way I read it. And if they are separate and equal, so to speak, how do we deal with the coordination, you know, between them and overlaps and what is and isn't covered appropriately, et cetera? How are we going to govern all that?
That's a very good, certainly a good question, and, and I think one of the challenges of, of sort of the way the contract would be structured. I think, and again, we have the benefit of having both firms represented this evening, so we certainly asked the question of them as well in terms of how we anticipate this working out. A couple of things. One is it's very clear as to the technical duties, which consultant is performing which technical duties, who is actually preparing responses, I think is very clear. And we will make sure that internally with the consultant team that there's a level of consistency that carries on between both teams' work products, and that's something ultimately the city is responsible for. But we would expect the, the project management sort of side of Metis to, to be ultimately responsible for ensuring that across multiple disciplines and multiple areas of review and comment, that there's a consistency among the document and that, that coordination occurs. Again, there's budgetary time allotted in both contracts for some amount of administrative oversight, billing, et cetera, et cetera. So there is budget for coordination. I think it's just a matter of communicating. And again, we have the, the fortune that the, the firms, the principals involved all have a working relationship historically with the consultants. And it's a matter of, it's taken a different form than it was, but we still have that working relationship, and they have that internal working relationship as well. But certainly, if you have any questions of the either principal, they're available.
Well, I have a couple of other questions, and at some point, I think it would be nice to hear from them. Hope we can do that.
Okay.
But I have a couple of other questions, and maybe we can just sort of bundle it all together and then get your response and their response. I can't find any place where, when we're looking at different tasks, responsibilities, there is a mention of comments on hazardous materials, but I, I can't find any place where it specifically talks about the toxic problems in the landfill and, and the remediation, mitigation, and all that sort of thing. It's not, doesn't seem like it's specifically referred to.
I will defer to the city attorney on that particular question. When in doubt, call the attorney.
Do you want to repeat that question?
Yeah. Well, I was asking about where in the document is the responsibility for dealing with the... Oh. Did you, is it clear now or you want me to repeat it? Should I reiterate?
Your, your question, as I understand it, is, is related to a, a peer review of the, some of the issues, the environmental issues. And that would actually be in a, in a separate agreement that we would probably structure as a contract, reporting to, to the city attorney's office to preserve confidentiality, at least initially, for the, the peer review?
I don't understand what you mean by peer review.
Through the, through the chair, what we're looking at doing is, as we said, for the, for the most part, we have a continuity of consultants. The same consultant who did some EIR work, did the EIR work on the draft is going to be preparing the responses to the final EIR. There's been, been some discussion about having a, in a different hazardous consultant, sort of peer review, the work that was done in the EIR in the context of the multiple comments we received in, in the hazardous materials context. I think we, we felt there was a benefit to the process to have a, again, a more of an independent, third-party review paid for by the city and to help create the, or not paid for by the city, but, but through the final EIR, paid for by the developer to, to respond more meaningfully to the hazardous materials and hazardous comments we've received.
So for me, that, you know, what you just explained is not clearly explicated in, in any of the language that I could find, anyway. So I think that, you know, if we're going to defer this or assign it to the city manager and staff to, you know, to make minor adjustments in language, I think this would, because I think this is an area where there's a lot of interest, and I think we need to make it really clear, you know, who's doing what. And it's, it's not really clear to me, since this is a really big issue, if not the big issue. It ought to be more clear. That's my view, anyway. On the next page.
Can we get a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30?
You know, if we could take a short break, I'd appreciate that.
What's that?
If we take a short break?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break.
That's okay, yeah. You want to vote on the extension before we do that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So move we extend to 11:30? Have a short break.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Ray.